...versus land use.
Are you doing any more of the meetings?
Whether his grandfather.
I don't really know whether this is going to be a seven o'clock fair or...
To China. Good, good. All right, at 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Kelly, would you please call the rule?
Here.
John Doofy.
Here.
Here.
Christine.
Here.
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 Here. So I'm going to change the agenda up just a little bit tonight. Kelly, we're going to add a very short presentation by myself on meeting dynamics before we get into the action items, and then we'll add a review and discussion of the moratorium before we adjourn. So, members of the board, several years ago, we had some different controversial agenda items that we dealt with, and in response to that, we now have what to expect at a town board meeting, you'll see that on the website, and also what to expect at a planning board meeting. So I'm just going to read this briefly. "Please help the planning board and the public by coming prepared with written comments. If possible, sign in on both attendance sheet and speaker's sheet. Please only speak if you have the floor. Always identify yourself by name and municipality. Please silence your cellphone, turn off any alarms upon entering the room. Please make the planning board aware of any disability you have that may require accommodation for you to fully participate in the meeting prior to the start of the meeting. If, as a speaker, you run up against a three-minute time limit, you may submit the remainder of your comments in writing or via email. The planning board carefully considers information and comments provided by the public in regard to a proposed project or application, whether submitted in writing or given verbally during a public hearing, meeting, or privilege of the floor. The planning board and its members may ask for clarification of comments from the public, but the board will not engage in dialogue or question-and-answer sessions with the public. Likewise, applicants are directed to answer questions from the board members and may address any response to public comments directly to the board. The board works within strictures of state and local laws, but is not a judicial or policy body, cannot address legal issues outside its purview, example code enforcement, trespassing issues, leases, et cetera. Please keep in mind that the site plan approval is not a guarantee that a building permit will be issued or that a project will be built. Like any public meeting, come prepared to hear comments and opinions that may conflict with your own and engage in civil discourse. Treat others with dignity and respect through your comments and actions, whether listening or speaking. The planning board has multiple agenda items to work through. Please keep that in mind when planning board has finished with items of interest to you. The audience must remain quiet to allow the meeting to continue. If you need to converse with parties about a particular item or items, respectfully take the conversation outside the room. Make sure that the doors are closed to allow the meeting to continue without interruption. Please familiarize yourself with local laws and land use ordinances as they directly affect your property rights. Please contact the planning department with any questions or concerns. We welcome your engagement in the process as the town updates and creates new laws and land use ordinances that impact property rights. Our goal is to include you in the process, gather facts, and gather public comment to be taken into account and used in the decision-making process. While the planning board reviews and recommends changes to the local laws and land use laws, the town board is the only legislative body with the authority to create or amend local laws." All right, we'll move on to our action items. Our first project tonight is 1:30, Hasbury Road. Come on up, please. Welcome, Craig.
What I wanted to do, refresh your courses, I got four acres of land, and now I divide it two acres in front and two acres in the back.
Okay, board, did we still have questions?
We had a question from Carolyn out here. Do you want to state that again, you're concerned, Carolyn?
Do you want me to come up or...
Dean, what do you say?
Yeah, come on up, Carolyn. Come on up and sit down so we can hear you on the microphone, please, those at home.
I have no objection to Mr. Christopher dividing his property in half. Our concern is that if the property is ever sold in the future, there'd be grandfathered-in the use of the property as a business and the use of the electric sign in front as part of the business, and that would convey as a grandfathered-in. And I don't know if the planning board has any control over that, but that was our concern and I wanted to raise it today.
Okay. John, can you speak to that for us, please?
Yes, so the use would be grandfathered-in. I believe that non-conforming uses are, the period of time is one year. So if they're not used for a year, then that use continues. I'm not sure how this property is original and classified and whether or not I have to look through our records and whether or not it would be non-conforming use or conforming use.
So if Mr. Christopher didn't sell for a year, it would refer to that R1 designation where it wouldn't...
So if the business weren't used for a year, then it would go, it would be under today's existing...
You're retired, right?
No.
No, so your business is still in progress?
Still in progress.
So...
I am planning to retire.
Okay, well, then you look pretty healthy to me. So I guess that's a continuing concern, then. If he's sold even today or tomorrow or in five years, if he sold the business, it would be conveyed with the, it being a business property and the sign being potentially turned on by, and it doesn't have to be a sign business, it could be a cannabis business, we got any kind of business. If Mr. Christopher sells it, he has no control, so what kind of business moves in there?
Well, there won't be any business there due to the fact that my grandson on the left-hand side, and the shop is there for myself and my wife, and then we'll get to the right who wants to go to help. So if anything, it'll be taken over by the grandson, and he's got nothing to do with sign business.
John, that doesn't mean any business could go in there, right? It's just, it has to stay the same type of business?
That's correct, so it would have to be a similar type of business, so you're fabricating and selling signs out there, so it would have to be something akin to that nature. So a cannabis business would just be, well, I mean cannabis in itself as its...
Yeah, I just...
Let's just say a hobby shop, right? Like some kind of retail, it couldn't be just that, it would have to be some sort of retail craft or something of that nature, it could be similar, similar to the use that was already happening.
I guess that's still a concern.
Sure, yeah. So unfortunately for this board, you can only review the subdivision, and if it conforms to those minimum requirements for subdivision, whether adequate utilities and access exists for that lot, non-conforming use regulations are put there for a reason, those uses can continue until they're abandoned. So quite a requirement of one lot size.
So you're saying we don't have any control over that, the board doesn't, okay.
All right, Carolyn, thank you for your input. I appreciate that.
Carolyn, did I see your name in the paper?
Yeah.
Do you want to share with us your achievement?
No.
No?
I went to the World Triathlon. Not everything you read in the paper is true, some of it is true, but I did go and posted it in the World Triathlon, and also...
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
Board, can I remind you that to speak into the micro speaking service, I have a...
All right, we have a...
I think we have a close to public hearing?
Yeah. Do we hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Tom.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Danielle.
Yes.
John Ziedler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Got that close enough now.
Dean, before you move further, you're missing one of your normal members tonight, you should decide who's going to...
Who was on last time? Do we remember? Was it you, John?
No, I don't remember.
I think Freddie is the one that I remember correctly.
You think Freddie was the one last time?
I think he's...
Then it's his turn tonight? Okay, so, yeah, we'll put Freddie on as voting.
Yes.
Okay. So we've got to go through the Part II of the seeker. Want me to read it? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
What do you think, board?
No.
That's no.
No.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
And eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. All right, so we have a negative deck and plat approval resolution in front of us.
I move to approve the resolution per subdivision.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, you want to call the rule?
Tom.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Danielle.
Yes.
John Ziedler.
Yes. You're all set? Chuck? 178 Wilson Road. Come on up. Welcome back.
Yep.
Did we do a public hearing on this?
It says anticipated action, it says to do public hearing.
So it is open, we had, we did it?
Oh, it's not open.
Oh, thanks. Today we opened.
Okay. Thanks. So do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone from the public like to speak about this project? Or have any questions about this project? All right, we'll leave the public hearing open here for a minute or so. Anybody in the board have questions at this point? You want to speak about this project?
I just wanted to know if we could ask a question after the hearing more about it.
Would you like to give us a synopsis of your project?
Me?
Yes.
It's a subdivision.
Were you able to get online, the person in the back, were you able to get online and take a look at the plat? Okay, did you have any questions about it? It was presented to this board, what, two years ago?
Yeah, actually it's sort of past, but I failed to do one extra step.
Right, and then it's been brought back to the board again, and we've considered it for two different, at two different meetings? So this is the third time around. So if there's any questions that you have, now's the time during the public hearing, come on up, tell us who you are.
I'm Donna Igrin.
I'm sorry, can you come up, because we'd like to have you talk into the microphone for the folks at home or on YouTube.
Hi, how you doing?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, yeah.
We're neighbors. I'm Donna Igrin, I live on Wilson Road, 154, and it wasn't clear to me what the, I saw the lot layouts, and is it going to be residential? Is there a stipulation for what it's going to be used for? I couldn't get that clarity online. So that's my overall question, is it going to be residential? And are there going to be individual residential units?
So any lots that are developed there would have to be developed within the zoning requirements of that zone? Do we know what zone that is?
It's going to be the RA zone.
So anything that's allowed in the RA zone is allowed to be built there, as long as it meets things like setback requirements, height requirements, et cetera.
And what is the RA zone?
Rural agricultural zone, so it allows, there's a variety of uses, single-family housing, two-family housing are allowed, and that's by right, which just means a building permit. Agricultural uses are still permitted there, there's just, there's a whole litany of uses.
Okay, and is that revisited again once it's decided what is going to be built or no?
It depends on what he wants to construct, so if Mr. Gen sold one of those lots and somebody bought it, and they wanted to build something that needed a different approval, then they have to come back to the planning board to decide that. If it was something that was just as by right, meaning it just needs a building permit, such as a single-family home or a two-family home, then they can just apply for that approval.
Okay, thank you. And then the east end off of the main road of Wilson, is that going to be consistent with the rest of the housing that is? Is that part of the zoning that we can expect?
Talking about setbacks.
Sorry, setback, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of that zoning district has setbacks from front, rear, sides.
So what we experience now on that road, we would expect that same...
You could expect it to be consistent, yes.
So not necessarily. So if the setback, for instance, is 150 feet, and you meet that 150-foot setback, you could set it back farther, as long as you meet the...
Yeah, right, I was just looking at the minimum.
But it could be that all the houses on the street are farther back than the minimum, so...
Okay, that's a good point, very consistent if that's the case. And then I guess I have one final question. With this additional, I guess it's not necessarily residential, though, is it, I guess now that we're talking here, I was wondering if there's going to be a revisiting of the speed limit on that road, since it's mainly residential and it's...
Speed limits are the purview of the town board to go before the state with a proposal for speed limit changes on roads, and it's the state that decides whether, for instance...
So that's something to pursue with that.
Well, we just had two, we had one on Farrell Road that was changed, and I'm not sure if the state approved the one on Wilson, or Water Wagon or not, but that's up to the town board, you can go before them and ask them for consideration.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, great. Anybody else want to speak on this project? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Freddie, do you have a copy of the Part II over there? If you don't, send, yeah, send that down for him, because we need to go through the Part II. Would you read that for us?
Sure. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
And number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. You have a G? Yes.
Quick question for parcel four. Is the road frontage, I don't remember, I thought I had the road frontage requirement. It's only showing, what, 82 feet, 81 feet? It's not continuous, it's not going to be like continuous.
I think the requirement there was 60 feet.
60 feet, yeah.
Okay. And I think we meet that at both the east and the west.
Yeah.
Or north and south, whichever way that goes.
Appreciate it.
So the minimum frontage would be 150 feet, and our code doesn't require it to be continuous?
Oh, it doesn't have to be continuous, okay. Okay, and then parcel one, the area is 1.36 acres, what's the minimum lot size?
40,000 square feet.
Brain fart today. Thank you. That's all, okay.
Any other questions, board? So we have a resolution, minor subdivision, plat approval, and neg deck, negative declaration. Somebody want to move that?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Danielle.
Yes.
John Ziedler.
Yes.
Freddie.
Yes. You're all set. Kelly, do you need anything from him in terms of final plats to be signed off?
He'll submit the final plats.
Okay, just make sure you follow up. All right, thank you very much. George, you want to come up? So tell us about your project.
Yes. Subdivide of 124 acres into a 118-acre ag lot and a five-and-a-half-acre house lot.
So you initially had three lots, you combined it to two, is that correct?
Yes, I had some concerns by one of the neighbors that if I sold that for a house, it would ruin their view, and then I had lunch on the deck, and I says, damn it, it would ruin my view too, so I just put it right out. I called up T.G. Villarreal, I said, take those stakes out, erase the line, and redo it. So that's why we're here now, kind of.
It's a beautiful parcel.
Excuse me?
It's a beautiful parcel.
Thank you. It really is.
Board, any other questions? John, did you get a chance to look at this in terms of setbacks?
We don't need to, the setbacks are pre-existing, so it's just a lot size and other requirements.
Well, I'm thinking about the north lot line here to the, to the house. There's nothing on here for the dimension on the plan, I just want to make sure that there's no issue with side yard setback.
Side yards are 15 plus side.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Yeah, I mean, the house has been there for 200 years, so... I don't know what the code was then.
Codes didn't come in until 78, 82, somewhere in there. It was all by gosh and by god.
Let's schedule that public hearing.
Okay, yeah, schedule that for next time, and we'll see you next time.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, stranger. Okay, Andy and company, come on up, guys.
Guys, your package here was well done, is well done. I wish everybody was this thorough, came for us.
Lot of meat here, this is nice.
That was Andy. So we just quickly, Dean and John, myself, and Andy met for a work session, and the output of that is this package. So Andy and George worked together, results engineering, and so we can answer questions and talk things through. Now, Merrick Island, not one of the partners in C Associates.
Yeah, so the package, we tried to address all the comments that we received from two previous meetings, we have other from John, that one additional to be addressed. We did a lot of work with wetland variations, getting locations from the DRT, driveway locations, got a letter from SHPO, historic preservation, and I packed for the project, added screening plants that we asked for previous meetings, and signage for tenants and for the address, so I feel like we've addressed comments from the previous... So I feel like we've addressed comments from the previous meetings. We don't blame you, any questions?
Go ahead.
Along your south boundary, there's a year-round stream, but it's on the town's property. Is that a federal? Is that designated federal stream? Is there a protection?
It's a state-regulated stream, Class A stream.
Is there a setback on that stream?
There may be. We're not. That's actually office stuff.
Right. But wouldn't the setback fall in the property, in the part of your property?
No, we're far enough north.
Oh, you are. So if it's like a 50-foot or 100-foot, you're still far enough away from that stream that it wouldn't encumber any of your property? Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Did you guys consider now or in the future about an EV charging system? Did that ever cross? Did you ever consider that?
It is not something that we would put in unless a tenant asks for it.
So I was just thinking that, you know, if you put the conduit in, and then like five years down the road, you wanted to put it, install it, it would be a lot easier than, you know, tearing it up in retro if you actually just ran the conduit now. And I was thinking, maybe if you put on the drawing that, you know, future site of the EV unit, and then you wouldn't have to come back to the planning board in five years or seven years or whenever you decided, if you decided to put that in. Do you think? Think that's a good? Anybody? Is that a?
Yeah, burying the conduit is pretty cheap compared to, you know, not installing it. Yeah.
So, you know, run the conduit, put it on the survey map, and say future use of, future site of an EV station. We're not going to hold you to it. It just says it's there, and it's been approved. What do you guys think?
I'm always for that because that means you don't have to come back if you want to make that change.
You're installing an electric dedicated space, does that state come back to the planning board?
Yeah, it's usually going to be two spaces.
I don't know, John. Would they have to come back?
Okay, that's really up to you, whether or not you want to see it, where do you want to see it?
Yeah, see, that's what I was. I was thinking it's just, it's easier now to do it. Now, put it on the plans, and then you don't have to come back. In case you did have to come back, it's already been approved. It's, I mean, it's just putting wording on the plan is what I was thinking.
Yeah, if you designate the spots, then they're approved.
No, don't like that idea, huh?
Yeah, I think we would prefer to wait until we knew what a tenant wanted and what the systems would.
Okay. I just threw that out there that. Okay.
Thank you, though.
Board, other questions, comments?
I'm very impressed you got, you heard from SHPO. That's very impressive. But sorry.
That's okay. I did appreciate you revisiting the treatment of that rear face of the building, so there's just a little bit more detail to that. Breaks it up a little bit more and makes it more pleasant in case it's visible.
I would also point out that the space is like roughly 5,500 square feet. We've set it up. We don't know how many tenants. There's no idea. They set it up so it could have four tenants. We show no windows in the back, but a tenant made one of those, so. You know, 54, they're delineating. And all those light fixtures on the back are motion sensor. And the one on the north is motion sensor. So the neighbor to the north, the restaurant, time clock.
They'll know when the deer are out.
And they're shielded as well, too, so there won't be.
Yeah, they're all.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I read through the planting plan. I thought it was a nice, nice plan. So we need to schedule a public hearing for next time?
That's up to this board?
That's up to the board, whether we want to do a public hearing or not?
So yes.
Yeah.
Let's get it scheduled. Did you have any more questions?
The other thing I was asking is, I know we can't get a building permit, but we have plenty more to do. And the building code is going to change anyway first. And it's going to change in some of these fairly earlier studies. So I'm really pushing to get drawings in for Christmas for Scott. I know he won't look at them if we don't have plenty more to do, so.
So we could probably do that next meeting, right?
Yeah. I was going to say, you heard the questions from the board tonight. There aren't a lot.
Is a public hearing required?
No, but we want to.
It's been our practice.
We want to hear from the public.
I mean, we definitely, what's next month? We could definitely get that approved. There shouldn't be any reason, and it still gives you enough time, right? Another month.
It's been on the agenda. It's certainly on the website, all the submittals, so there's no reason that the public doesn't, hasn't had an opportunity to take a look at the project or see this meeting.
Indeed, the next meeting, we bumped up to November 17th due to.
Right, it'll be early because of Thanksgiving.
George, maybe you can tell the reviewer to put a placeholder. Hopefully, it's coming, pending, you know? The renovation.
There's some things that will definitely change by January. Most of the things aren't going to affect us who are planning on heat pumps anyway.
It's the fire code. We're talking about this, do you have a reference?
Window.
Fenestration.
There almost going to need to be triple pane to make the new building.
Yeah. Till turns or hauntings or fixed or smaller or whatever. Yeah. Gliders and double hungs are going to have a hard time with the fenestration requirements.
Those as well. Only get more expensive.
That's right. All right. I think we're all set for tonight, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you for the level of detail.
Okay. Who's here for 4:30, Preagle Road? Come on up, gentlemen.
Hello. Can I ask Scott a question?
Hi, Scott.
4:30, Preagle Road, for sketch plan review. Before we get started, I just have a question. I got a letter in the zoning office stating that the sketch plan was approved, evaluated, and moved to the next step of site plan with paying the invoice. I'm not sure why I got that.
I'm sure either Scott, you're here in front of the planning board for a sketch plan tonight.
Right. So I'm kind of confused. I got the invoice and the letter stating that.
Don't worry about that.
Okay. Don't worry about that.
Don't worry about that.
Okay. So I'm proposing, I have a site on 430 Preagle. It's had an existing business since 2011. It's a satellite distribution center for O'Toole's gravel. And I'm proposing a new 50-by-80 hoop house, a small camper for use for like an office, and a satellite underground skills.
I haven't seen a map in the packet.
Yeah, I don't remember. I don't know if it was probably like two months ago, three months.
Yeah. Yeah, that was what was in the submittal.
Just the six.
Yeah. So, John, this is all we've asked.
This is just a sketch plan. So for our minimum requirements for site plan applications, but the first step is just a first flush in front of the board for you to determine what you think of the project, ask for any more information that is outstanding of the normal site plan requirements to raise issues ahead of time for the applicants before they invest a lot in the application. I think it's important that we clarify the use, because we do have, what we discussed before was a contractor yard. I think we need to discuss how that plays into a satellite distribution for the mine, Scott.
Yes.
And just clarify those things.
So who's, will you do that? Clarify it to us? Or, in other words, there was an approval in the past for one use, and we've got a potential different use now. Is that correct?
I think we need to discuss what that means. So the previous use, the way I understand it, and if I'm wrong, you.
Well, can I explain?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
So just to give you kind of a history of the site, because it's been there, like I said, it started in 2011, came to the zoning office, explained what I was doing, and they said it was an allowed use, no site plan review required. There was existing buildings up there from the previous barn. And what I used it for was screening topsoil. We stored it in the existing barn. We brought in concrete, blocktop, used a crusher to crush that and separate the steel from the concrete, the blocktop, and sold that and different gravel items. From that point on, we, it was, at that point, it was allowed use, no site plan required. In the spring of 2024, a little over a year ago, I came to the zoning office again, asked for a hoop house, same size, 50 by 80. Was told, no site plan required, it's allowed use. So I got my permit, put the hoop house in. And the fall of 2024, I was told by the head of the planning department and the Scott Russell, that you guys, asked them to send a letter to me stating that I need to close the site down or go to ZBA or be fined. And no phone call, no email, nothing. And called down, asked for a meeting. Wasn't allowed to have a meeting with anybody. So it changed from allowed use with no site plan to not allowed use, ZBA approval. Then in the spring of this year, had a meeting, finally allowed to have a meeting with lawyers involved, and the zoning office determined now it's an allowed use, site plan required. So I've been kind of a, you know, I know people change zoning office, planning boards, but I've given mixed information for over a decade here.
So Scott, let me get, so your attorney met with the town's attorney over this? You guys had a meeting?
So we had, we were finally getting the attorneys involved. We were able to set up a meeting with Mr. Zupko and two zoning officers, the town supervisor and the town attorney.
And the town attorney. And then what did the, what did guys say as a result of that meeting? What was?
That's why we're here tonight. So if I could speak.
Yes, go ahead.
So we have on file a letter somewhere around 2015 or so from the former code enforcement officer, sending the applicant a notice of violation of the contractor's yard is not permitted in the site plan review. Looks like they became Mr. Penny, or whoever owned the property at that point, came into that site plan review at that time, along with, I think, 15 duplex units on the portion of the property to the west. It was all approved together, the duplexes and the contractor yard. From what I can tell, there wasn't even a definition of a contractor yard at that point, so I'm not certain how it was approved in that manner. But there was very specific conditions attached as to, there was a map attached to it showing the approximate area. There was very specific conditions of the type of material that should be there, as well as the specific hours of when grinding and things of that nature could occur, the duration that it could occur. We did issue a notice of violation when we perceived that it was now open to the public as activity for the mine. However, part of what Mr. Penny says is true. We didn't have a phone conversation because it's not like we keep a database of property owners' telephone numbers. We sent letters, and that's how we were able to communicate, to who you were out of the country at that time. So we were not able to link up until probably January or so, when we heard a response from your lawyer. And then we didn't, we're not able to schedule a meeting until May, and we did at that point in time. And we agreed that it was a contractor yard was a permitted use with site plan approval. It's a little ambiguous to us whether, because the duplexes were never constructed, the site plan is void. So it was as though it never had a site plan approval. But the use still was there. The use still existed. So the best way to get to compliance was your site plan approval, which is why Mr. Penny agreed to put an application in. And that's where we are today.
So let me add a little bit to that. So what happens is.
Just one second. I'm a little bit slightly younger. Were you the town supervisor one morning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Understand it might be a little confusion there, maybe why. Yeah, you're here today.
No, thank you guys for your service, too. You guys spent a lot of hours here.
Our position, too, we're catching up here.
Yes.
So thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you're welcome. So it was a little bit different than that. The site plan review was for the apartments. And along when I was trying to do the apartments, they wanted restrictions on the, the town calls it contractor's yard. I call it a satellite yard. But, so I agreed to certain restrictions on that business to allow it to get the permitting to put the apartments in. And when I was going to finish the apartments, then I would actually close the contractor's yard, because I had a lot of apartments right next to it. Unfortunately, when I tried to build apartments, I only had a year left, and they refused me as a building permit. So then I didn't build them. So in zoning law, those restrictions all go away. So it wasn't like I was trying to get a site plan review for the contractor's yard. So when we had our meeting, there was something the zoning office didn't quite understand that those restrictions go away. So that's mainly why they closed me down. And I did call the zoning, as soon as I got the letter, I called the zoning office right away, requested meeting, 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 and no meeting until we got the lawyers involved, which is, and they blamed it on you guys. They said that the letter was written by the planning board, which I don't know if that's true or not. I find that hard to believe, that a group of people write a letter so nasty, close your business to go to ZBA. And that's something, that's one of the reasons why I became supervisor way back when, because they would write letters like this. And to a person that doesn't have the resources and the knowledge to fight this, it's devastating. It destroys businesses. Fortunately, I was trained very well by Guy Crowe about zoning, so I read his letter immediately when I got it. People don't. And so in the meeting, when Guy Crowe said that the zoning office was wrong on all these things, Guy Crowe personally asked me if I'd come in front of you guys to mitigate some of the concerns about the neighbors. I said, absolutely, I have no problems with that. And he said, please put in your, something else into your project so that they actually have something to approve. So that's why I put a few things in there that, so I had a reason to come to the site plan review. But I want to be a good neighbor. I want to mitigate certain things. I came with, to the zoning office, said, hey, you know, there's noise, dust, all, you know, I got different things we can do to mitigate these issues. I've talked to a lot of neighbors and listed the concerns, you know? So I'm not, I'm not here trying to be a bad neighbor, but there's a lot of history in this site right here.
So the town, the violation, you're still in operation, though, right now, Chris?
Yes. But I was shut down for almost eight months, I think, John? That was, that was a long time I was shut down.
I don't know that you actually shut down for that amount of time, but.
But you're, but again, the town is not forcing the violation. You're still able to operate right now, currently.
Because the town lawyer said that was not violation.
The town board said this?
No, the town, the legal council.
It sounds like this might be a little disputed, and maybe we should stick to the topic of a sketch plan review. I just, is that all right?
Yes.
I understand the history. It sounds complicated, which is why maybe some lawyers were involved.
Yes.
Still playing the new guy card here for two years and now. But just wanted to, so the sketch plan review, one of the basic questions about a contractor fill site, does it say you can have as much fill as you want there as a dumping grounds? Or are you, it's a process material? Or I'm just kind of curious, which, I don't know that.
So actually, the fill site is actually full right now, so there's no more material coming in other than material that's resold.
So there's always materials coming in and out, that's a.
Yes, but not, not for fill. Not for fill. Materials coming in, resold, but nothing for actually filling the site anymore.
Oh, okay. For changing the grade of the.
Yes.
Site itself, not the business of moving material.
Right.
So, John, I have a question for you. You said that the site plan review for the apartments was back in 2015?
2016.
2016? Because I was here for that. I may have been an alternate at that time. But my recollection at that, at that time was, of course, we were concentrated on what was potentially the roadway and where the apartments were going to be and all that. But there was, at that time, to my recollection, there was no discussion. But, um, there was, at that time, to my recollection, there was no discussion that this was going to be any kind of retail, and that it was going to be a contractor yard for your business to use for your business, not to retail to the public at large.
Uh, so I was actually, I was retail from 2011 and on, so that's.
John?
So regardless of the history of that, it's actually listed. It's in, uh, two seventy dash thirty seven point seven.
In our code?
Of our code, retail and service is the category. Okay, and, and contractor slash landscaping yard. Any space inside or outside a building used for the storage or keeping the construction supplies, building materials, landscape supplies, rocks, stone, bricks, fencing, mulch, et cetera, construction equipment, machinery, vehicles, and parts thereof, which are in operable condition, and enacted use by a construction contractor. So it's, it's listed as a, a retail and service under, under that category. Now, by a site plan.
When did that, when was that put in place?
I believe 2023.
Okay. And so those, those are the rules that we're operating under right now?
Those are the rules you're operating under right now.
Well, when I saw the, um, what, the submittal that you brought, so some of the, uh, concerns that I have, of course, are talking to the neighbors, finding out what neighbors' concerns are, of course. But as I drive out there on Schofield Road, um, you know, there's some, uh, apartments there to the northeast on Schofield Road, are those your apartments?
No.
Scott Morgan's maybe?
Yes.
He's done a nice job of, you know, planting trees and what have you, but for, I know that for residents along Schofield Road, there are certain places where you can see, uh, your operations. So, I mean, there's a lot of, um, existing vegetation there, some big, you know, willows or whatever are growing there. So I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to want to see additional screening. I think that we want to have some dimensions here and really see what kind of, you know, delineation there is, um, for the contractor yard. Because we want that to be well defined. Um, I think we're going to want to see topo map. We definitely want to see the entire, the entire parcel, not just, not just this one little corner.
The location of the sign?
Yeah.
Distance?
Yep, yeah, and, you know, dimensions on the sign, where exactly it's going to be located. What do you show here? So you show the barn, the hoop houses, the proposed office and scales.
The entrance and exit. Entrance exited.
Well, there, there is none over here, as far as I know. There's no entry or exit on Schofield?
No, no.
And you took down the old Mosley barn that was there?
There's one left.
There's one left?
Yes.
Did DOT give you the okay on that, for the entrance and exit on the state highway?
Uh, no, it was existing.
It was existing, okay.
So Board, what other things are we going to be looking forward to move forward with the review at the next meeting? And what other questions do you have now?
It'd be nice to see a, a more detailed sketch plan.
And how about community? Would that be, would we open it up now or next, next meeting? We got demand for more detail.
Well, I'm assuming that once we have more submittals in, that we would, uh, open it up at the next meeting for public here.
So we wouldn't do a sit-in?
No.
Okay.
John?
That's all in addition to what our minimum requirements are. So, um, on nine three, um, I sent the, uh, just in preparation of, of your eventual spill, I sent Mr. Penny, I copied your need as well on the, on the requirements of site plan review. So I just wanted to be clear, a lot of the, a lot of the detail, map scale, that sort of thing is already covered in the minimum requirements, but the, the things that you mentioned, screening, dimensions, showing the entire parcel, location of the sign, that's, that's all in addition to that. I just wanted to be clear that you're not, you're not weaving portions of that.
No, absolutely not.
So, um, just a question about, is, this is coming back before us for site plan review, and we don't have a lot of detail on the map currently. Do we have stormwater concerns with this? How much is, how much disturbed site are we talking about?
I think the site's already disturbed, but.
Disturbed to the max, kind of already.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but my understanding is like, we are looking at it as a site plan review, there's existing stormwater?
There's existing stormwater facility on the site, so it would be.
So that should be reflected on this map then, too?
Part of the thing you need to look at is determine if stormwater is an issue or not, and it's part of your review.
It's just to the west, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so the relationship to this current site plan review and the existing stormwater, I, I would be concerned about that, want to see that.
Is there, is there a concern about the existing stormwater, other than showing up?
I don't know, because I don't see it, so.
I, uh, can't remember if you've been tracking debris with large trucks on the road, like a stabilized construction entrance, that's more temporary, but this is more of a long-term.
Yes.
Should a short section be paved, or do you, how do you handle that currently?
So I actually got a paver up there, but I didn't dare pave it, until I actually met with you guys.
You don't want to pave it and have to rip it out?
I just found a way to see what you guys, so I wanted to kind of make that part of the site plan review after.
Okay.
Yes. And I apologize, I was supposed to hear, be here last month, but unfortunately, this thing came up, I couldn't make it. So one, one concern I got, so my surveyor said the topo is, uh, very difficult, because there's, there's obviously probably seventy percent of the property is covered with these huge piles. So in a topo, would you?
I think we're concerned with the base.
So if you just shot, so it wouldn't be a real topo, because you'd go around the, kind of around the piles, is that what you want?
Yeah, and I think that we want to understand how many piles and, you know, approximate heights of those.
Because they change.
Well, yeah, and I, and I get that, but.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to want to know elevations on the hoop houses.
I was thinking it too.
You know, how tall those are.
Okay.
And, and what do you want for screening? You want more trees? What are, what are you thinking? Is that something you want to work out with, with them in a contractors meeting, or?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I want to hear from, from neighbors, because I think that the screening, there's a lot of good screening there already.
Yes.
But there are some holes in it, and I think we want to address those holes.
Okay.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah?
Is there any chance you can talk to some of the neighbors now, so you get an idea of what they want for screening? I mean, you, you did, you talked.
We've got to, we've got to, we've got to advertise a public hearing before we can have a public hearing.
I think since there's more than two people in the room, we should stick to what's on the agenda and the forth of rates.
I mean, the, the public's welcome to submit comments in writing.
You want to write it in and make comments, either anyone?
Not outside of a hearing.
Oh, really? Not outside of a public hearing?
You can't do that?
No, because how do you guarantee that everybody's comments are being considered?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Stop time and all that?
Okay, okay.
Just, just like I did, ask, and Scott would have an idea of what you're looking at?
Well, Scott's free to talk to the neighbors.
Yes.
Nope, nobody's stopping him from, you know, uh, showing up, showing up with, uh, donuts and flowers at somebody's front door to talk to them about his project.
Can I just ask for clarification, given that we were just told neighbors can't come into outside a public hearing? What if the neighbors actually disagree factually with some of the history that was just shared? And the board doesn't have that information?
You're welcome to share that at the public hearing.
Yeah, so there's appropriate time for, for that, just not right now.
Okay, Board, any other questions or comments for this?
I, I think it, it might be helpful, actually, if the board did have a written history, um, from the town's perspective, of communications and approvals.
We can do our best.
Okay, as much as you can. That would just be very helpful for me, because then I'm not relying on information submitted by the public or by the applicant.
Yeah, and I would include the, the 2023 law.
I mean, it's probably also.
Yeah, the code.
Yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
See you next month, and we'll get a public hearing set up for next month. Uh, so Board members, I wanted to just, um, make sure you're aware of a couple of things. One was the, um, comments from, uh, the town board on the, um, proposed law number seven, the moratorium, in addition to the draft of that. And then also, John Duthy had some, um, copies made and handed out of, um, was that, uh, from the town board back in 2020? And 2019? Some resolutions from the town board back at that time regarding the, um, closing of the cold-fired plant.
Yeah. I, I actually, I have a, I'm confused about, uh, some verbiage in the proposed moratorium. And I was hoping maybe John could clarify it regarding the undeveloped lands and how it's, how it's used to calculate the potential lots. So my understanding is there's a maximum of eight lots, correct, John?
Yes.
And then, the way I read it was that if you had a parcel, say of, say if it's ten acres, and you subdivided one lot off, that was an acre lot, you would divide that one acre into the remaining nine. You'd have nine lots added to the one, it would be a ten-lot subdivision, and it wouldn't be viable? It's on sixty, I think, if you'll go down through. So that, I, that's confusing. Why, why even include the unused or undeveloped acreage in the calculation of potential lots? Board members, did anybody get a chance, Tom, you wrote it?
I, I looked at it. I, I guess I didn't see it that way. I didn't see it that if you had a, a one-acre lot, then you assume that the rest of it could be nine subdivisions.
But then you'd add that to the one, it'd be ten, and then that one wouldn't be viable, right?
But what, but why would it have to be a one-acre subdivision, one-acre parcel? The, the other parcels, or the, the, the main parcel could be split up into four-acre parcels.
It says that you have to use whatever was the original acreage, it's split out, assume that was going to be applied to all the remaining acres, the way it originally was.
But if somebody actually proposed something, they wouldn't have to make it one acre. I mean, that, that's the way I, I read it.
Yeah, that is, that is very confusing language. I'm not certain how to interpret that now.
I, I don't think the, the undeveloped acreage should even be involved in the, in the moratorium. I mean, who, why do we care what, what the, so, the way I'm saying is, is that if you had a fifty-acre parcel, and you just wanted to sell one acre off, for whatever reason, you should be able to do that, in my opinion, you know, if it's in the A-G zone or R-zone.
The R, one, two, or three.
Yeah.
Well, when we do a subdivision review, we do, we, then we would count that as two lots. So that would be either one acre lot and then the parent parcel, and we look at access for both.
Right.
But I agree, the language is, is pretty confusing. I, I wouldn't want to use it.
The way originally was worded is you take the size of the lot that you're proposing and use that assumption for the remaining acreage. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, it seems like, it's written to try to avoid segmentation, in a way, and then to, but for one, for a one-year moratorium, it doesn't make any sense to me to then try to project out additional subdivision on the parent parcel, based on the average of the.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, the second question I had was Drake Road is in a B-zone, and the remain, and this area around Town Hall is a B-zone. So you can do a subdivision on one side of the road, but not the other. Why isn't the B-zone included in the, in the R and the, um, A-G zones? You follow what I'm saying?
As opposed to industrial or?
Yeah, I mean, I think B should be added in there as well, along with the R and the A-G, no? So if you look at the zoning map, as I said, all Drake Road is, is Zone B. Why is it not allowed in Drake Road, but is allowed across the street?
Well, to be clear, um, my, I, I didn't draft this.
Right, I know, I'm just.
So, but what I, what I think is the reasoning is that the B-zones are highly likely to change during the zoning update. They're more likely to change. Those would be areas that are kind of focused on in the gap analysis. That's, that's my belief.
I, I just, I don't think it's fair, you know, if you live on Drake Road and you're in a B-zone, you can't, but across the street you can. I would say include the B-zone in it, in my opinion, to be fair and equitable.
So to, to back up for a minute, this board is going to make official comment to the town board, correct?
Yes.
And, and which of you is going to be compiling those comments and?
You willing to do that?
Yeah.
It's going to be Al.
Thank you.
Alfonso.
Thank you.
Because it missed on the agenda, is the goal that we got, we have our discussion now, and then you compile the notes and submit it. But do you want to do like, after a discussion, you kind of straw poll yea or nay? Or just say, these are the edits we want to see, and this is the factors considered, I guess, what are you?
Well, I, I think we want to, we want, it's, I think there's, it's, it's two goals here tonight. One is to, to clarify the, the moratorium as it's written, there's, I think there's concerns. And two, I think we need to discuss whether this board really wants to support the moratorium or not. And that can be done via a straw vote, or we can even do a resolution, I believe, if, if we wanted to. I mean, it's up to Dean and, and the rest of the members here. So I would say to begin with, are, the, my concern is the verbiage on the undeveloped or the remaining acreage is one concern that needs to be revised, the way, the way it's written right now, is one concern. The other, the other one is the B-zone. Does anyone else on the board feel that that, that is inequitable? That some areas of the town can be subdivided and other areas can't, that are residentially related? Even though it's a B-zone, it's mostly residential.
I agree. That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I honestly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't restrict residential-related subdivision in any zone where it's allowed, for minor subdivisions. And I, I would keep the current standard we use for minor subdivision as opposed to, so minor versus major subdivision, as opposed to kind of writing a whole new standard for it.
John, what's your experience been with special use permits in residential zones, A-G zone, B-zone? Do you see very, do you see very many at all?
I'm, I'm not certain. I've seen one special use permit, uh, since I hired Al with Town in 2021.
There, there's always been a question in Guy's mind whether special use permits are even allowed by, by law or not.
Well, that's another, if you're asking me about my professional opinion of special use permits.
He says it's either allowed or right, or it's not.
Yeah, I think, I think we could just handle all of your site plan review, but, but I think that's a subject of moratorium, that's a subject of zoning.
Well, that's, that's one of the things that would not be permitted under the moratorium, is any special use permits or review of those. I mean, I did one for my property, because I have eleven acres now, but I had ten acres at the time, just so that I could have animals there. And other than that, I don't think any other special use permits have come before the plan board since I've been on the board.
That's, that's because they're handled by the town board? But it still happens.
Well, they, they kind of, they typically come, well, yeah, I guess you have to be approved there, but you have to come back to the planning board for approval as well.
So, so what's your concern then with special use permits and, and the moratorium? How's that related?
Well, the moratorium would not allow any special use permits.
Okay, so you believe that should be added, or there should be some? Okay, so you believe that should be added, or there should be some verbiage in there to allow review of those?
Yeah, for residential, for sure. Another thing that would not be allowed would be any signs. And I think that if, that's a real concern, that temporary signs, for instance, could be allowed. Something that's not permanent, with the understanding that, hey, if the zoning changes, you're not allowed to put in a permanent sign, but you can have a temporary sign there until the new zoning is put in place, that meets the existing sign law in terms of size, for instance, in number of signs.
So, with the moratorium, if it does get approved, I guess there is concerns that there's something else that we may not have thought about, or, you know, may actually resurface or surface, that may appear not to be fair or equitable, I guess. Is there a concern there? You kind of follow what I'm saying?
I don't.
So, I'm just saying, so if the moratorium was approved, and somebody wanted, there was something, there was some action that wanted to be taken, and all of a sudden it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed, or wasn't outlined. In other words, if we would have thought about that, we would have said, oh, we should have had, that should have been included or addressed in the moratorium, I guess, this.
As either allowed or whatever. I mean, I'm always concerned with non-conforming lots, because, you know, the state's view on non-conforming lots is that, hey, you bought it, so, too bad. But, you know, we don't live in Kansas, so it's not like a grid here. We've got gullies and hills and, and streams and all that. And so, something that your neighbor could do because their lot conforms, you might not be able to because you have a non-conforming lot, and you would basically not even be able to come before the board to get approval, whether it's, you know, the ZBA, or the planning board to be able to do something that everybody else on the street can do, because we can't even consider it.
Yeah.
Because it's not conforming, and wouldn't be allowed under the moratorium.
And I don't think the Z, going to the ZBA is going to be very, very restrictive, because it's, it's essentially three pages of legal writing on all these, all these things you have to check for, for some, you know, a lot that's, that no one's thinking about. If the moratorium goes through, someone's going to be stuck for a year for a very small reason, but the way it's written, people are going to have a very, very hard time getting anything done through the ZBA.
Yeah, I've heard that comment from others, that, that the, the, the application process and the review process for a variance is very restrictive, the way it's written in the moratorium. I don't know, I mean, just saying that, I'm just reflecting what I was, was passed on to me. I don't know if that's true or not. Does anyone have a?
It's what it seems to me.
What's that?
It's got a lot of language.
It seems way more restrictive than it is currently.
I mean, the ZBA seems to be the appropriate place for a variance. That makes a lot of sense to me, that this is, the moratorium is a land use law, and so you go to the ZBA for relief from that land use law. But it does, there's, there's a lot in here that I'm not sure, I mean, I understand, it sounds like people are trying to cover their bases, but say, you know, for example, item seven, you have to do a seeker anyway, so it goes without saying that you, that action needs to be supported by the seeker, by the seeker process. So, I just, I think it complicates it more than it, it needs to be.
So, comments that I'm hearing is that the planning board feels that, that possibly the, the, the outline for application for variance is, is, should be reviewed and possibly the verbiage softened, or lightened, or however the word.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Something like that is what the board feels?
I think so.
It's very much.
Streamlined, or whatever the word is?
Pretty restrictive.
I can't help but ask, from the quieter members of group, Freddie or Christine, any, shall we hear from everyone? Any initial thoughts on the whole moratorium, or going with the flow is fine, or?
Well, I, I mean, for me personally, I think that part of the discussion that we're having is what the moratorium is trying to address, you know? And so, there seems to be a lot of gray area around many of these topics, whether they're too restrictive or not restrictive enough, you know, so.
I think, I think we need to finalize, I think we're doing it in two phases here. We're talking, we're looking at the moratorium the way it's written, and are the recommendations from the planning board on cleaning it up, revising it, or making it better, is the one thing. And then, two, we need to talk about, is there a need in how the, in, in that discussion? Is there a need for it? How does the board feel? And then, maybe we make a recommendation, one way or the other, whether we're for it or against it, or we don't even want to make it. We can say, no, we don't want to make a, a formal opinion. But let's, let's finish up with the way it's written. Is there anything else in the, the verbiage in the, in the description of a law that you think needs attention? Cleanup, revision.
I did have a, I had a few questions, but I'm not sure, so given that they probably re-directed to John, and John, I know you haven't, you didn't write it, so you might have the same questions. So, thinking about how home-based businesses would be handled under the moratorium, again, you know, there's the, we've moved the threshold for commercial uses from 3,000 to 6,000 feet in the proposed language, I think that would be helpful, but home-based businesses, as they might end up in front of this board, not by use. I haven't seen one yet, so I don't know where those scenarios, where that would necessarily come about. But I was just trying to think of things, like, so what comes before this board normally, in which we don't really have a hard time making a decision or a recommendation? And those are the things that I think really shouldn't be subject to the moratorium. But there are things that do come before this board, and there have been so few in the two years I've been on the board, but that, which I, I don't, as a planning board member, I don't necessarily feel like I have the, the legal backing I would want to ask the questions of the applicants, to be able to protect community standards, basically. So, that would be like a major subdivision. We haven't seen, I haven't seen that in my time here, but I, under the current law, based on what I've heard from comments around community standards and other projects, I don't know whether I would have the guidance in the current legislation to be able to review that appropriately, reflecting on the comprehensive plan and what we have available. The same would hold too for major commercial, major industrial uses. Those are the areas that have been concerned, outside of areas where we just may need some actual rezoning of, you know, districts, like where we had a potential use that was located right next to a residential area, and, and would have been allowed. But it was, the, the conflict in that case was baked in to the current uses that we have, and the way the zoning map was reviewed. So, that, you know, that I'm hoping will be, will be covered in the rewrite of the zoning law. But I, I mean, I would, I would support a moratorium that would help give us some time to address those areas where the planning board might not have the information and the backing we need to protect the town, the way that's being reflected in the comprehensive plan. But I would say the majority of the actions that come before us currently in the, in the two years I've been here would not, would not really fall into that. It's basically where, you know, where we get into asking applicants, like, so, for example, we have applicants who came for a commercial property, and, you know, because they're local and have, you know, have a history of working within the community, were able to have a very productive conversation with them, where we expressed our concerns, and they came back and said, here we go. That was a conversation we were able to have, but if that applicant wasn't as friendly, and didn't have the same sort of interests in mind, we might not have gotten the same result. And I don't know if we have the legal backing in our current zoning law to be able to really force the issue on, say, stormwater, or, you know, schedules for planting, or something like that.
So, I think, I think probably most of us on the board would agree that, we would agree that zoning needs polishing and cleaning up, right? Everybody here?
Yeah.
Could all agree to that? So, the question is, is a moratorium necessary to do that cleanup? And so, I would say, you know, first, I think we need to discuss market conditions in the past, what's, what's, what's been happening in the past, what's happening presently, and what do we anticipate in the next year? So, as I, as I said, in the past, we really haven't had any major subdivisions in years, correct? Anybody remember, or anything more than four lots?
Just the PDA, or, you know, we've had a PDA with Village Solars, but yeah, I mean, subdivisions have been, nobody wants to build them out. Nobody wants to pay for all the infrastructure.
Right. And so, in my opinion, the, the, the way the market is today, like, 10 years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, where somebody bought a tract of land and, and subdivided it up and put in housing, I don't think that's realistic today, or even in the near future. In other words, the cost to put in, as Dean said, the infrastructure for the roads, the electric lines, the storm, and then you add stormwater to that, and then you also add in carrying costs. In other words, if you did subdivide it, you're not going to get them, say you had a 20-lot subdivision, you're not going to sell them all in the same year, so you've got to carry, you've got taxes to pay on the unused lots for three, four, five, six, or whatever the absorption time is. So, when you look at the costs, the soft costs of engineering, surveying, you know, legal architect, and the hard costs of putting in the roads in the, in the infrastructure, and the cost of stormwater, there's no money there. It's not realistic. I don't think you're going to get anybody to, to develop a tract of land in the near future.
If it was super profitable right now, the Youngs would be doing it in several different places in the town.
So, I, I think the worry about taking farmland and, and having it subdivided and improved upon, I don't, I think the market is already taking care of that. We don't need a moratorium to protect us from that. That's my opinion. Anyone else? John, what do you?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of, a lot of that. I did call, because I'm on a zoning committee with Dean and, and Tom, I did call Colliers, which is the, the company that's doing the rewrite, and they said they didn't, they did not recommend a moratorium. They said it can be used in certain instances. They said, out of the last 30 zoning rewrites they've done, there's only been five moratoriums. And moratoriums can be very specific, for good or for bad, on something a town doesn't want, like a data center. But I agree with you that the market is acting like its own moratorium, because it's so expensive. We don't have many projects in Lansing at the moment. So, my question is, can we prove that, now that, I, I think it's, there's two separate issues. There's a land use moratorium for Lansing, and a data center issue. I think they're two separate. I think if you separate the two, I don't know if there's enough evidence to say that we would institute a moratorium that's so restrictive on property rights, because I don't know if we have, like we're saying, there's not enough proof in the last few years, and not enough proof currently, to where we, we should have a moratorium. The data center is a separate issue, but I think without the data center, I don't know if we'd be talking about a moratorium to begin with.
Let's back up a second. So, we're, we're talking about residential, some large tracks of subdivision. I don't think that's economically feasible, no probable, in the next year. That's my opinion. You know, yes, you may want to have, just like we're seeing in the last few years, an acre here, or a lot here, a lot there, or, or.
Or road frontage.
Road front, existing road frontage, because that's, that's feasible to do. So, but then the next step, the next thing we should probably talk about a little bit is either industrial or commercial. In the last few years, yes, we had a couple dollar stores, and we did have the Dandy Mart, and that's, what, five years, six years? There hasn't been a heck of a lot of commercial, other than the strip mall we talked about today.
I wouldn't say that those are, you know, changing the character of Lansing. I, they're very, they're used by a lot of people. There's a lot of people in Lansing that don't have a lot of money and use those stores.
We lost the Lansing market, probably, because of.
We, we lost the Lansing market because the baskets of goods each individual bought didn't increase, so.
But they are built on, you know, main roads, but.
Yeah, just the history that I remember, the last two years, maybe or so, in the board, was our town board liaison would tell us, you know, to back up even further, bringing up Dollar General, for instance, if I wanted to ask for a safe pedestrian path for, in front of Dollar General, say a sidewalk, we couldn't mandate that. When I work in the city of Ithaca, we say, you build a sidewalk for anything because it's in our town code. So, I, I think like you're beginning, I would say, we all agree that the town code that needs to be updated. And when I told that to our liaison, he said, all right, we're going to win a grant, we're going to go for a grant to help rewrite this, and that's why we have this grant, to rewrite this code that will help update our laws.
Right.
So, maybe is, is it too extreme, downstream, but I'm just, I think that's the history that I remember, my perspective, that we all agree with.
Right. But do we need a moratorium to rewrite the zoning laws? That's the question.
No one else?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have a very good voice, so I'm trying not to talk too much. But I, I guess I see a moratorium in, as more of an emergency stop order sort of situation. In the city, you get a great deal of projects and development happening, and proposals for things. If we look at College Town in Ithaca, for example, prime example of where a moratorium probably was somewhat necessary, but then you, in the town of Lansing, as we've pointed out, there has not been a considerable amount of commercial or residential development of any considerable size, that to me warrants an emergency stop work, stop development in a small town like Lansing.
Right, and that's essentially what the moratorium is saying. It's, it's an emergency, we need to stop it, and I don't see any aggressive.
And I think the downsides of potential emergency stop development could ultimately, and you, you can see this today in, in College Town, there is, there's no business happening. I mean, there's some, it's starting to come back. But that, the, those moratoriums started in 2007, 2008. It's 2025, and they're, you can't walk the street and hit, throw a stone and hit a business in, in most cases anymore. It's disappeared. The people, you know, that used to visit those businesses have gone elsewhere. You see a lot of development happening down on Elmira Road. None of it, and none of the community really participating in, in College Town. A lot of the community has dissipated and gone elsewhere, and it's a bunch of students, and the, the students don't create enough business activity to bring business back into that area. So, I, I think there's some really significant development and economic downsides to a moratorium, and if we, I, I, in my feeling, it needs to be an emergency in the town to, to stop that, that sort of level of development. I'm not seeing that level, in, in my mind, I'm not seeing enough of that development in what we've seen in the last two years, to warrant this being an emergency and, and for a moratorium. That's my personal opinion.
John, you want to?
I think you also, you think you do have to look, like Christine said about financial.
John, I can't hear you.
You do have to consider the financial impact, and the current state of the town. I, I know that we're going to be paying on the Highway Department barn in 2027, it's 1.2 million for a number of years. It's, it's going on the budget. And the moratorium, we have to think about that. Any proj, if, if there's no moratorium, any projects coming in front of all of us, anyway? Is there enough things that are, is there enough, you know, evidence and projects to state that is, is it an emergency, is the question? But the town also needs money, it needs, it needs a base to be able to afford the Highway Department. And that, there is, this is a separate issue, but there, there is these resolutions from 2019 and 2020, talking about when the AES, the coal plant was shut down, it was a resolution saying, shut it down, and we're supporting a data center back then, and the town board at the time voted unanimously to support this. And it's, it's changed now, but. at the time voted unanimously to support this. And it's, it's changed now, but as you read it, you can see what they supported. It, it was a smaller type project, and I'm not advocating one or the other, I'm just saying, there's some history behind that power plant, and where the town was heading, and what the town was thinking five or six years ago. For good or for bad, you, you can read it, but it talks about jobs, what it would create, talks about broadband, health in the Lansing community. So it's just history that can be used. At one point, it, it was recommended to the town of Lansing that this was a, something that they should consider, and the board urged the governor, the power authority, to support this in Lansing, although it never happened, but.
Can I, I want to build upon what you said earlier. So board members, not only will the tax base, you know, it may not grow much, but also, the moratorium could actually cause the tax base to decrease. And here's my example. So there's a lot of large tracts of land in Lansing that, that were bought for development purposes. And so the, the buyer paid a price per acre for development. So in other words, let's say they paid $10,000 an acre for the large tract of land, and it was a fair sale, and the assessment office put $10,000 an acre as an assessment. If their moratorium is in place, the developer, the owner can no longer develop that property. Is it still worth $10,000 an acre, or is it worth less until the moratorium is, is rescinded or, or gone? So if the moratorium is in place, I could see developers coming into the assessment office and saying, hey, I want my land that's valued as development land possibly revised or reduced until the, the zoning is revised and changed again. So that's something else that should be considered, is a possible reduction in the tax base. Anyone?
I don't know that that's general practice. A moratorium is usually limited in time. I mean, I think Ithaca is not a great example of that one. It's, so it's, you know, you can reassess once a year.
Annual.
Yeah.
So you can grieve, you can grieve your assessment annually?
You can, you can. But it's, a moratorium is not a permanent change in the status of the land.
It is not. And it, you're talking about market rate, so it, whether the, it's allowed to be developed or not developed, probably doesn't necessarily relate to the market rate entirely. There's cer, I'm sure there's certain situations.
Yeah, but it's, it's vacant land is, the value of vacant land is based on its highest and best legal use. If it legally cannot be developed, then the question is, should it be reduced or not? I'm not, I'm just-
Yeah. I don't, I don't like that argument at all.
You don't believe that?
No, I could be wrong, not for, not for 365.
John, do you know who wrote this, or a team or committee, which, which, guy wrote this, you know, the language? Thank you.
So some of the things that, that I'm concerned with, if, if I was going to do a moratorium, I would probably go with type one actions, which are very large. Actions would be the kinds of things that I would potentially want to restrict. I, I'm definitely very concerned about any kind of emergency action. So if there's a storm, or even if it's not an emergency, and you decide you want to tear down your, the house that you just bought because it's really not in very good shape, and you just want to rebuild, you want to use the same footprint, I mean, that, that's allowed, but it would potentially not be allowed under this if you had to, for instance, come before the, the zoning board for some reason. I'm concerned about places like, is it Leifah, Leifah, what do they call it, the soccer field? Well, what if they want another field? You know, they're not residential. They're going to have to come before this board. And, sorry, you know, you got a grant to put another field in? Oh, well, you know, you're just not going to be able to do it. Maybe you'll lose your grant money. Customer, or companies like High Gear came in, you know, and wanted to put a, put an addition on. So if we're looking at existing businesses like that, that want to increase their capacity, and want to be able to grow and stay here in Lansing, that would potentially not be allowed during the moratorium. Sorry, you got to wait another year, or two years, depending if the moratorium gets kicked down the road farther. You wouldn't be able to, to build that because it's outside of the residential allowed, you know, development.
And I think that brings in the idea of, you know, existing infrastructure and, and buildings, where you, you already have things that are there. It's not just vacant land, where, you know, you're repurposing something that may already exist. And the data center could be considered sort of in that repurpose area, where it's repurposing a industrial site that, into another industrial site. I don't know that, you know, it, it would require a lot of site plan approval, but I, I think that it kind of follows your idea of there's existing businesses, and existing infrastructure, and things that could be sustainably used during the moratorium, that might not be able to be used later.
Right. And I, and I'm very concerned that we would discourage those businesses from staying here, whether it's, you know, High Gear, or-
And they could easily move to Dryden or Crotten.
Test, test IMR.
Yeah, they don't have to move very far.
You know, if you need more space, and you want to keep everybody under the same roof, that, that can be an important consideration. Can really affect your business. So, yeah, my, my personal straw poll is, is I would, I would say no, unless we have something that we can really identify specifically that we think is an emergency that needs to be addressed. And if we do, or if the, the town board does, then I think they should express that in a very tighter form, and not, not as broad as what we see in the proposed moratorium.
Yeah, I could, I could get behind something a little more targeted and well, well planned in advance.
What do you think, Tom?
Well, let me just read the statement that I sent to the board. "I understand the intent of the law to develop a new zoning code to fulfill the vision of the comprehensive plan, and, and do it without major land use and development changes happening while the zoning is being rewritten. However, the Lansing business community has had, and I would have predicted to have had, a very strong negative reaction to the temporary moratorium. Many, or most members of the business community already feel that Lansing is too restrictive for them to operate effectively. For example, site plan review takes a while. And see this as another potential major burden on business operations. On the other hand, many, most town residents want to see development safeguards to prevent helter-skelter commercial development, which will negatively impact the pastoral beauty that they enjoy, and make Lansing a desirable place to live. I don't believe the Lansing business community is at all interested in despoiling the landscape for their sole profit. I also don't believe that Lansing residents in general are opposed to well-planned commercial development so the town can prosper. And furthermore, the town board works very hard to benefit both the business and the residents and the community. It's not an easy task, and is often unappreciated." The new temporary moratorium law is certainly a big improvement over the initial one. For example, 6,000 square foot development versus the original 3,000 square foot maximum, to avoid triggering the moratorium. This allows for the vast majority of projects I have seen come before the planning board for, for review in the last few years. Exceptions, Dandy Mart, Dollar Generals. Of course, we do have a big one in the form of a data center, but that is an issue unto itself. As a planning board member, I am not sure this temporary moratorium is going to help the town. There are certainly two sides to the argument. It has been clearly a polarizing influence in the last month. In addition, the moratorium has been distracting the town from progressing with the zoning rewrite, which is the ultimate goal of all of this." So that's just sort of my general feeling about this whole thing. You know, we're dividing, we're dividing the town, polarizing it. I think we can get the zoning done without any huge changes going on in the town that's going to alter the character of it in one or two years. And so I'm, I'm not a big fan of the moratorium.
I think we should edit the last sentence, and I'll sign Tom's letter.
What was that?
Maybe edit the last sentence or so, and I'll sign, sign that letter.
Do you want, do you want a straw vote, or what do you want to do? Anyone else want to speak on this before we take a straw vote, whether we think the, the moratorium is an emergency situation, and maybe it should not be, we're not going to support it, or how are, how are you going to word that?
Well, given the, the poll result, results from here, what our discussion was, and if they go ahead with a moratorium, the things that we would suggest that they change in their, not necessarily specific language, but just overall, broad concepts of what we think should be changed.
So you're going to take a vote, asking whether we support, or we, how you, how you would word that?
Yeah, just do a straw poll right now, who would be in favor of the moratorium, and who wouldn't?
So who is not in favor, you take a vote, and then who's in favor, you take a vote. Anyone else? More discussion before Dean's vote?
So are we voting on how it is as presented, or as we've discussed? Because that would have a pretty big influence on my response to the straw poll.
Well, I think it's as, as it's written now, because that's what they've presented, with the very short list of changes, which are, change square footage from 3,000 to 6,000, removes more than, no more than 10 persons, clarify some ambiguities, add RA and ag zones to the list of zones in first sentence regarding residential subdivisions, replace the term police power with something not so alarming, change language that's more in line with the status quo rather than freeze in place. Those are, those are the only changes that I've seen coming out of the board at the moment. So given, given those, would you vote that you would be in favor of that moratorium or not?
So, and I, I don't want to belabor the discussion, because we all want to get home.
Right.
So I'll do. But, so you brought up the, you brought up the two examples, you know, so High Gear, for example, or IMR. So how are those currently classified? Is that like manufacturing, manufacturing, industrial, what's that?
What do you mean by that?
I'm sorry. And that's why, also why maybe I didn't ask that question. But again, like, I, I think if it wasn't clear before, I can, I can hopefully be clear now. I support-
They're not residential.
They're not residential, they're not residential. I would support a moratorium that gives both the town and the planning board the space to be able to have legislation that gets us to the goals that we have in our comp plan, and reflects some of the comment that we've had around community standards, over multiple, multiple reviews. However, what I think I've seen is that the majority of the business we see that is locally generated would not be touched by, not, it would be impacted by the current moratorium. But if we can get to a point where the moratorium would really just cover those things, where it's like, I don't, I don't know if we really have the right laws in place now to handle that. I would feel much better with it. I would also be really concerned if we did get a large proposal, and like, again, the data center came in, and I don't know that we have the laws in place to be able to deal with that.
Or type one action.
A type one, yeah, a type one action. Again, you know, and honestly, I don't want to have to review, I don't want to rely on the seeker review to get at things that are essentially site plan review elements as well, too, that would be affiliated with a larger project. So that's, that's my concern with no moratorium. Would I, do I think that those projects are likely, likely to come in in the, you know, one year, 18 months? No, probably not, given the, you know, the current, you know, the current economic environment and the history of what we've seen. So I'm not as concerned about those potentially being impacted, because we don't see them a whole lot. But I do want to make sure that the majority of the business we do see, which is substantially in line with the character of the town, it probably wouldn't change under revised, you know, laws, wouldn't really be affected by the moratorium. That would be my goal. That's, if I can be just clear.
So back to what Dean said, we can take a vote the way it's writ, we need to take a vote the way it's written right now. Should the, should the town board recognize some of our concerns, and want to revise the moratorium the way it's written, and then bring it back to us, I guess then we can reconsider that again. Is that possible, Dean, or?
Yeah, so I, so I think the first vote is going to be targeted towards the way it is now, and then we'll take another straw vote. If our concerns as a board are addressed, would we feel comfortable with a more targeted moratorium?
Like type one?
Yeah, exactly. Like it's type one actions.
Type one is a great threshold.
One, one note that I remember from when fracking was really popular, and there was like a road preservation law, and that whole history was, you can't specify specifically industry, I believe. So to avoid future legal matters, I think we should not-
Well, type, type one action doesn't talk about it, you know.
That's, that's the verbage to use, for sure, and not talk about a data center.
But, but no, morally, legally, moratorium, you can specifically-
Targeted.
Target a specific use in a moratorium. It doesn't have to be broad based, if the town board wanted to do that. Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously got to be based in some kind of reality, like our comp plan, you know, that, that kind of thing, I think. All right, so here's our straw poll. Are you for the moratorium the way that it's written right now?
No.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any hands for that. Are you for the moratorium if it included the kinds of changes that we want to make, including basically just saying no type one actions?
But, but we have to be careful on that. How, how much, how many of these concerns are going to be included in there? All of them, part of them? I think we need to, to say, would we, would we-
I think if you, so if you're talking about only type one actions, I think that the things that we discussed would, would all then be ameliorated.
Oh, you mean all these other things?
Yeah.
You nailed it with the type one. Can you, I don't know, I don't know necessarily process, and maybe John knows more about. If you say, I want a moratorium on type one actions, I don't know where the, the data center is on that, but if you vote for a moratorium on that, have they started a process enough to where you would be infringing on their rights to that property as is currently, but you're voting for a moratorium, now are you voting, and you, will you have a lawsuit in front of you if you vote on a moratorium? And they've started the process, spent a consult, you know, I think if you spend a considerable amount of money, talk with the town, submit things, and this is what I, John knows more about, is that going to affect the town legally, is the question I have?
Well, that's definitely some, those are the kinds of questions the town board is going to have to be thinking about and acting upon, for sure. So just in, when I was looking at the, the seeker law, it's six NYCRR, pardon, 617.4, where it talks about type one action. Type one actions are things like greater than 100,000 square feet of floor space, unlisted actions in the ag district that are non-ag, greater than 10 acres of, yeah, new work in non-residential. So that would be like, potentially business or industrial. A lot of the things that we talked about in terms of ag, those are covered by ag and market laws, and so a lot of things there, you can't, you can't stop. Greater than 50 residential units that are not connected to water and sewer, those- Those are the kinds of big projects that would be type one actions.
And that might change the character of the town.
Yeah, potentially.
So, Dean, to review, the, it's a consensus of the board that the moratorium as proposed to us, we do not support. Is that correct, board members?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I saw from all eight of them.
And then, should the town board consider revising the moratorium to only include type one actions, we, we would consider supporting that.
Yeah, how many, how many out of the eight here would consider that?
But wouldn't you want to know more? You can say that, but then wouldn't you want to be able to have the opportunity to read what those restrictions would be?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, you're not just saying type one, you're saying, "I want to be able to review what type ones and what the actual language of the law would say."
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we would want any moratorium proposed to come back to this board for, for review and comment. So, if it was tailored more to a type one, who would support that? Show of hands. One, two.
I think I'd still say...
Three, four. Four yes, four no. Okay. All right, Mike, that gives us, any other questions or discussion or input?
I think my only reason for not supporting is we just don't see enough of that activity. I just don't see it being realistic that during that moratorium, it's going to be such a big issue. I could be very wrong regarding that decision.
Okay. Okay, I think that we're good on that. So, Al, you're going to play something up, send it to me, I'll review it, and then make sure everybody sees it before I send it out, and we'll send that recommendation to the town board. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Is the liaison on the board, or...
Joe, you, he's hiding in the back there.
I think it's, it's a form of the town board meeting.
Okay.
And I want to thank the town board, three of the town board members that attended the meeting tonight. Thank you for showing up. Thank you.
Dave, we're adjourned.